This meeting of the Tuftonboro Planning Board. If I could just ask everybody to put your phones on silent. Before we get going, does anybody have any questions about planning board procedure? And I should start off by saying that if you are here for the Verizon Wireless cell tower, that that has been continued. Because the third-party RF engineer report is not in. And without that, there's very little that we can do. So, does anybody have any questions about planning board procedures? Or general planning board questions before we get started?
Aye.
He's on. Yes, sir.
Hi, Ken Hooper. I understand that the variety of situations we've put on at this point. Are we still actually have opportunity to comment today?
You can certainly speak if you like. It's a public comment or provide material to the board.
I agree with that, it'd be good to have.
Now's as good a time as any.
So that's it?
Absolutely. I should mention that there is no one here responsible from, no one here from Verizon Wireless.
I understand.
And that the application is not being heard tonight. But you can certainly present information if you would like and we'll put it in the public record.
Yeah, it was kind enough to tell me the situation. Yeah, I'm really coming more with questions tonight than I am comments. I'm really seeking some help on this thing. I understand, I learned this week, that there are three towers, including the Tuftonboro Tower, we can put up in the near future, is that correct?
We only have an application for one at this moment.
Okay, I just heard, I, gosh, I forgot the source. Two other towers are going in. And if, since you only have one application, you can't comment beyond that, is that correct?
Nothing to comment on, because we don't talk about applications.
Can you help me understand what the purpose of the R study is?
I, we can take information, but...
You don't can, absolutely.
The applicant isn't here.
Okay, thank you. There has been some discussion between my friends about the height of the tower and the fact that it might be rather unsightly, 130-foot tall. And again, I'm just gonna put this out there so it's on the record. I'm happy to be here tonight. I probably won't be able to send it to you. Because it's the highest point of the neck, it would be seen pretty much all over the way. 130-foot tower on top of the very highest part of the Tuftonboro net could be a problem as far as unsightlyness. And again, I wish I could speak to Verizon, but I'm just speaking into the record. The proposed tower, as I understand, is a 130-foot, it'd be quite high over the neck, it would be about 62 feet above the 68-foot canopy. And maybe you can help me understand, I believe that this canopy, the town of Tuftonboro allows for 20 feet over the canopy for a tower? Am I mistaken on that?
Again, we're just gonna take information because the applicant is not here.
Well, I was just concerned that we were going below what is allowed by the tower. As I mentioned in my letter of last month, and thank you for reading that into the minutes, the master plan reminds us to protect natural landscape and sustain Tuftonboro's rural character and ecological well-being. And I'm afraid that the 130-foot tower would be contrary to that. One of the things I understood, it was, I did attend the meeting last month by electronically, it was very difficult to hear. And I believe that I understood that Verizon stated that the federal law, that federal law cell tower application can't be turned down for health reasons? Was that part of the meeting last week, in our room, last month? Do you remember?
Again, we're just here to take, the applicant is not here. But all of that is in the minutes.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. All right. I think that what I would like to do, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. And I will read those minutes carefully. And see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, first off, a little bit of housekeeping and approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes that need to be made?
I do.
What do you got, Jen? Comment, Sarah.
I could not hear. No, I could not. On the second page, it says, "Keep the first meeting online, however the quality is poor and she could hear anything, could not hear anything."
Could not hear.
That's it. Alessa.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
I'm good to me.
How would approval is corrected?
On second act.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first up, public hearing, Richard E. and Mary Rowell. Did I pronounce that right, sir?
Rosell.
Rosell? Yeah. Tax map 15-3-38, two lot subdivision, formal subdivision, and public hearing. All right, what do you got?
Please take us out here.
Oh, why don't you come up and tell us what you're looking to do?
I just wanted, just wanted to take a 4.55 acres and divide it with the two acres and then the other two and a half acres.
Okay. Have the monuments been set for it?
I believe everything has been done by the...
I don't, I don't believe the monuments have been set.
No, they haven't been set yet?
No.
No, they haven't been set or done.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Heavens and residential minimum block on edge is, if I remember right, 100 feet?
100.
100, which we have. Minimum lot depth, if I remember right, is 150 feet, which we have. Side setbacks, look like they're outlined, they're outlined as typical. Let's see. Looks like we have a perk test. Are there any leans on the property, or?
No.
Any easements?
No.
Matt, I've been in contact with the surveyor, Greg Jeffrey. And just so, just so you're aware, a subdivision application has been submitted to New Hampshire DES, but it hasn't been approved yet. So one of the conditions, along with the monumentation, should be that the...
State subdivision.
State subdivision approval and any conditions attached there, too. And then they will also need to submit a Mylar. He was just waiting on the Mylar to see if the application was approved.
Yep. Does any member of the board have any questions?
Pretty straightforward, didn't it?
She uses about a straight line.
Look at the map here. There's no wetlands on the property.
No.
All dry.
Right.
All forest at this point.
Yes. Looks like Stoney Ridge Environmental did it.
Yes, Cynthia Bauschius.
Yep.
Performed it.
All right.
What is the 4K area?
What's about to ask that? What's the 4K area on your...
Yeah, square here, 4K.
I'm guessing that's 4,000 square feet, but what is, why is delineated there?
Okay.
So the original...
They're showing a 4,000 square foot.
Yeah, so the original subdivision plan that was submitted did not include the 4K area when I was reviewing it. So I contacted Rick and the applicant's agent and let them know that a 4K area is required for septic, for the, to show that the parcel is suitable.
For septic.
To, yeah, for septic and that it meets all the setbacks. Anything under five acres, DES requires the 4K to be delineated on the plan. Anything over five acres, it doesn't have to be there.
That was related to the state?
No, I understand what it is. Okay, thank you.
Well, I knew about the perk tower, but I hadn't heard the 4K one.
Yeah.
Is basically just for scale?
Yeah, it's just to ensure that the land is billable for anything under five acres that, because when you're dealing with less than five acres, you could have ledge, you could have topo issues, you could have wetland issues. And so by delineating an area, that's why, so when I contacted Greg Jeffrey, I would, he was, he, I told him, I said, "You're gonna need a perk test in order to determine whether or not the soil will allow for the property to be developed, and then you have to delineate the 4K area." So they had a septic, I mean a perk test done, and then he delineated it, so.
This is an interesting question, why do we have it on one of the lots but not on the other?
You already have a house in the other lot?
I don't think there's any on there.
Is, this is... It's the new lot that has to show.
It's just this one lot that I'm separating right now.
So this is the existing lot?
Correct.
Creating a new lot? I just went in there.
I thought it was any lot under five acres on the subdivision, and a perk test.
I, okay, I, I believe it's just the new lot. But I, I'll look into it, I'll double check. I actually, you know what? I actually sought guidance from Jim Rhine, so maybe, you could probably ask him.
Got a handful?
Don't they consult with you after?
Simple subdivision, creating two lots under five acres. Perk test required on both?
Yes.
So just make that a condition, and then I'll contact, I'll contact Greg.
Well, good. So, for conditions, I have certification of monuments. There's no leans. State subdivision approval, Mylar. Perk test in 4K areas is gonna be required on the second lot, which means he's gonna have to submit another set of plans as well.
Okay.
But he hasn't done the Mylar yet, so that's good. Yeah, okay. What else do we have?
Mylar certificate of monumentation, DES subdivision approval.
DES subdivision approval.
And then just the 4K representation on the other lot. I would say test pit and 4K representation.
All right. I have a motion to approve the proposed subdivision with the following conditions. One, monuments need to be set, we're just gonna need a certificate, certificate of monumentation. State subdivision approval, Mylar. Test pit on the second lot, as well as 4K representation on the plans, which we need to be planned. The subdivision approval. And that's all I got. Got a motion?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Call me tomorrow. Call me tomorrow. Call me?
Yeah.
Call me tomorrow.
All right.
Okay. Can we have you run it all up and just do that on our test?
When he gets back from Florida.
No, he's coming home.
Next up, Swift Family Trust, tax map 54-2-3. It's okay with you, Jim, we'd like to kinda do this as two different ones and get the subdivision out of the way first, and then the rest of the site plan. Site plan reviewed, sorry, two lot subdivision, basically making one lot into two. And site plan reviewed, it's a subvention to an existing auto repair business. Property lies in neighborhood business zone, auto repair is a permitted use. Where would you like me to set?
That looks great.
So, just to orient the, hidden in the back, you can't see.
That's okay, you know where it is.
All right. Orient the board and the audience, this is Middle Road, Route 109A. This is where the Motor Works, 603 Motor Works, City is now. And this is where the Swift Family Trust owns all of this property, and it's all single parcel of land, about 13.83 acres. And they wish to subdivide off the lot to the Motor Works so that the business can be separated from the residential property. Has frontage 139.75 feet of frontage on Homestead Lane. And it also has 50.04 feet of frontage on Route 109A. To preserve their, their existing 911 address, they plan to share this, this E strip goes with this property, and they'll maintain their address and... So that's pretty much it. This, this is greater than five acres, does not require state subdivision approval. This lot is less than five acres, it does require state subdivision approval. We've shown the test pit in the 4K area, there is an existing septic system on here now that's sized to accommodate not only this use, but in the next application, the proposed use, because it was a minimum commercial size system. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions that the board or the public has on the subdivision action. All right, well, at this point, we review the application, the application is complete, I have a motion to accept the application.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Monuments been set, Jim?
The monuments have not yet been set.
Okay. The only easement right of way is the one shown?
Yes. Yeah, this will, this is, this is fee for this one, but this lot will have the right of access.
And I assume you checked out the neighborhood business zone and that, because I did.
Yes.
You were right.
Yep. Jim, where did you reach the setbacks off that building? Here's the setback line right here.
Okay.
And this, because this is its frontage, so this is the front setback, this is the side, and the rear.
Okay. Ah, it's pretty straightforward. Any member of the board have any questions?
No.
Does any member of the public have any questions? Yes, sir.
I think, I think it should be approved, I live right across the street.
Name and address.
Robert Dalton, 110 Motor Robson in Tuftonboro. I'm right across the street, and I see no problem with it being approved.
Perfect. Any other member have any questions? And or any other member of the public have any questions? All right, I have a motion to close the session.
So move.
Break it in.
All right. So, for conditions, we have monumentation, scriptive, obviously. We had state subdivision approval on that lot. DOT change of use at all, or?
I have, I have emailed them an application and mailed a hard copy to them for DOT amendment to the existing permit. The existing permit was for residents and automobile.
Yep.
But because it's a, in the next application, we're proposing to expand it to...
That's all I got, anybody? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the application as presented with following conditions? Certification of monumentation, state subdivision approval on the front lot, DOT amended permit. And that's it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
All right, so next up, on this newly created lot, is application for a expansion of an existing repair business, which is permitted in neighborhood business zone. Unlike some uses, there's no square footage limitation in the zoning. And with that, Jim, what do we got?
So, this is now the, the blow-up of the lot that you disapproved. This is the existing structure here, and the proposal is for a 52-by-48-inch, 48-foot free bay addition, plus a 20-by-18 space for waiting area for patrons and office space. This is existing parking here. We are proposing for the square footage to meet the parking requirements, we need three additional spaces, which we are proposing here. We are proposing gravel driveway initially, we've submitted drainage comps, and at your suggestion, Matt, I have here tonight to submit a waiver from, from paving, at least initially, that ultimately they would love to pay that as the economy and finances allow. We have submitted drainage computations, which we have sloped all of this entire new parking area to an infiltration trench around here that is sized to capture all of the runoff from this for 50-year storm event. Similarly, we have proposed infiltration trenches around the additions to also capture the additional runoff, so there is no additional offsite storm runoff. The site plan review regulations require a buffer of 25 feet between residential and non-residential. We have preserved 25 feet of existing vegetation, which the regulations permit. And I, but I did request a waiver because this existing parking, this is now a property line, it doesn't comply, but it's 120 feet from the nearest non-residential property which is here, I mean residential property which is here, and none of the parking faces that. And it's about 300 feet from this one, which is family-owned, and it's got, it showed the tree line now, so they've got about 200 feet of natural vegetation such as it is.
So you have 25 feet?
Have 25 feet from here to the, to the new property line.
Yep. But not 25 feet down below?
Not down here. The existing parking, you know, comes in at the 25-foot, a couple of the back spaces are there, but they're heading toward Middle Road, so felt that that was not...
And that's because of the new property line?
That's because of the new property line. So because of that, I did request a waiver, simply because the, these, I feel that, you know, it's family property, there's almost 280 feet to the home, and there's about 200 feet of vegetation here, plus we have the 25 feet here that we're preserving. And the pavement, the same thing, that, you know, the drainage calculations compacted gravel and pavement have the same runoff coefficient. And so even if this becomes paved in the future, this additional treatment swale, I mean retention, will accept the runoff from that. I also have for you the, this is the letter that went to DOT today by email to Bill Owens, the Assistant Director of DOT. And I provided, we have the copy here, the first and last page of the Swift Family Trust trust documents, so that the board would have those in their file. We did reach out to Adam after Matt had suggested, or just asked if we had any comment. He's on vacation this week, so if the board is inclined to approve this, it would probably be conditional on something from, some, if we're comment from the fire department. There are no floor drains proposed in the existing structure, the, I mean, proposed. The waste oil is presently put in drums, and then it's transferred to individuals who use, burn waste oil, they have waste oil furnaces. The, there is a storage container here now, that would probably just be moved over to the, to the side of the building.
Who does that storage container?
Oil. Is that the cars, or who does that?
Equipment.
Equipment, equipment and tires.
Equipment and tires.
How do you store other flammable?
Full fire safety cabinet inside the building currently.
Okay.
I also provided you with a guardrail detail out of the Conway, for a wooden guardrail detail on the, on the bridge that's, that's in the Conway regulations. The intent is to put a guardrail on, on the existing bridge. And the lighting would be, would be shield cut off, you know, ground directed, but ER lights that just, you know, show, you know, sort of safety, they're, they're on motion sensors, so that if, they're not on constantly.
And that, any outdoor washing of vehicles or outdoor service of vehicles?
No.
How much waste oil do you guys keep on site?
Less than 1,200 gallons.
That, just so the board knows, that keeps it under the small quantity generator status. That's, if you go up to 1,300, you get to large quantity generator, you get to all the, all the wax, so, which is good. So the oil is in drums, and it is... So the oil is in drums, and it is secondary containment?
By...
Do they store it inside, or do they store it outside?
We have a number, a few drums outside, and then we have about six inside.
Okay.
Not wait, not on, I'm sorry, two indoor wastes.
Drums?
Yeah.
Okay. If it's outside, it should have it should have secondary containment of 110% of the total overall amount stored. And that can be...
Secondary tank?
Concrete steel, 275-gallon tank. The problem is, once you get into 275-gallon tanks, DOT views them differently for transporting them versus drums that you're allowed 110 gallons of. But whatever is outside should have some form of secondary containment, and if it's not, a rugged secondary containment baller still, the truck doesn't pack up into it.
We could use it, I've seen use half of a thousand gallons secondary tank, and just set the drums inside that.
You can buy, well, you can't use them for outside, but they have, ones the drums sit on, they're basically plastic tubs with a grate. They work good for indoors. Well, the members of the board have their questions.
Jim, you mentioned on the inside of the building, there's no drains. Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay. So everything's contained inside?
Yes.
And did you say that the fire chief, is the fire chief up to that?
Oh, is that us? The fire chief is on vacation, because I actually...
Okay, that's right. I'll go up to you. Excuse me. I just need to get my jacket.
Okay. I'm not going to stop you.
Thank you.
And the hours of operation are?
Monday to Friday, eight to five.
Those hours work for you, or?
I don't think any hours work for us right now.
I know, yeah. So usually when we do a commercial application, we come up with some hours of operation. Obviously, your family surrounds it, but they may not always. So we always try to put some reasonable hours on it. So something like six to nine.
Yeah. Sounds good.
You could always come back and get that.
My only question is just with the being state inspections, we do have to match, I was assuming we have to match the hours?
No.
So because we have to tell them our...
Okay. This is just, let's hypothetically say you became extremely successful and got a master card, and we're working on it 24 hours a day, revving it up. Then you had, your family moved away, and there was some other neighbor there, and they weren't very happy about it because it was late at night, and, you know, in the morning, and, you know, it's going crazy, so...
It couldn't happen.
How does it vary?
No, 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 no. Ten hours?
Turn it down.
No, seventy hours, we anticipate.
I would say, I would say exactly eight to twelve.
How about we just do it seven days a week, six to nine?
Okay.
We just try to put something on it.
You're giving me a golden meat now.
Mass fighting, I mean, it's a long list. All right, anybody got any? Does any member of the public have any questions or input? All right, close the public session. I have a motion to close the public session. I didn't have one open it, but go move.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. What is, the board have any input? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the application with the following? Well, I'm sorry, we have to deal with waivers. So we're dealing with two waivers. One is that we have been presented in writing. One is the 25-foot green space on the lower portion right there only. It's clear that the conditions are existing. The abutter on that side has made a point of, which was Guy Pike, that he supports the application and has no issues with it. I don't even know how he would attempt to address that. If we didn't grant the waiver, what are the members of the board thinking?
Fine, but, you know, I think that's fine.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the waiver for that 25-foot green space?
So move.
So here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The second waiver is, site plan review regulations require an asphalt paving. They're not doing outdoor service if they, I'm sorry, I'll give the hand up. They're not doing any outdoor service, so there's not going to be spills to clean up. It's an enormous area. Younger person looking to build a business, which is exactly what this town needs, and I think it would be an undue burden for him to pave, you know, 25,000 square feet of driveway or so, if he doesn't need to. So what does the board think?
Situated where it is, and, you know, others given the growth of the business, you know. I don't have a problem with it. I have a lot of gravel parking, so...
It's relatively flat, you know, so it's not likely to be erosion.
Not erosion issue.
I think it's fine.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the second waiver?
So move.
What's that again?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Any other questions for members of the board? All right. Can I have a motion to approve with the following conditions? One, a letter from the fire department with input and any needed changes required. Secondary containment of oil, meeting the requirements. No outdoor washing or maintenance of vehicles. Guardrails on the bridge. Hours of operation, seven days a week, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Does any member of the board have anything to add?
I do not.
Nope.
I have a motion...
We talked about secondary, did you mention secondary?
I got secondary containment.
I'm sorry, just please stop, thanks.
Yep, no problem. Believe me, it happens to me a lot, really. I have a motion to approve the application, and we always throw in, or all require state local and federal permits.
So move.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The board voted at the DOT, the amendment should be goes on this, it's all...
It's asked for both, it's something, you get, I've seen the letter and site plan, so... Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Everybody.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
I'm going to need a lot of coffee.
Last year's vegetation was the last year's vegetation.
All right, next up, master plan, steering committee update.
All right, on the master plan, let's start with the website, okay? We have the working website. And if you go to the tuffinborr.org, first page, bottom right, you'll see the surveys, the questionnaires. If you click on that, it'll take you directly to the survey questionnaire. Okay, click on that, and the service monkey comes up. Questions are here, very simple, easy answer. When you're done, submit it, and it goes. If you want to come back and do it again, it's on the back end. It lists who you are, the address. Also added to that was the board questions, okay? The comments boards. We added a link there that will allow you to answer the question of the week online too. And that link will take you to the service monkey again. And again, you answer it, and you're done with it, and it goes. So it's extremely simple. So these things go to municipal resources. All right, they don't go to land. We don't know how many people have answered them. We don't know anything about it. We're fully biased, hands-free, they deal with it. They'll most likely give me updates when I ask for them on our five-week reviews. How many hits do you have?
Hold on one second, are you going to drill back for?
That guy.
Come over here. Sorry.
So, the other things that we're adding to it, we're going to add the comments boards section to it. When you go to that, how shall I put this? When you go to the particular screen for the service monkey, there's a left-hand column, and we'll be adding things there where you can click on steering committee. When you go to the steering committee, you'll see the postcard, which is the scheduled events and how this works, all of our meetings and minutes. So they'll get combined in that page. Right now, it's separate. And you can press on up above, it says steering committee, so you can click that, but the menu will be expanded. So land, you're expanding that. You're adding that to the left-hand column. What else are we adding? We add one other thing we're adding to that left-hand column. Comments boards, we have the questions?
I don't think so. I thought it was pretty much complete, except for the photos.
Which one?
I thought it was complete, except for the photos, so I'm not sure.
Oh, the photo thing, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You've got to add the photo, so. So she's got to add a link of the photo now, photo content, so... And people will be able to click that and then be able to add the photos. And those photos will come directly from the end, okay? The postcards have been mailed, they're done, they're gone. People should have them, if they have P O boxes, they're sitting there today. Tomorrow, I think that we are scheduled, tomorrow, the questionnaire will go out from the company Minuteman that did the printing, that'll be gone tomorrow. And we are now going to be moving off to our next subject, which is the infrastructure chapter. So right now, MRI is developing that for our next meeting next week. And they'll have a scheduled events on that, okay? We talked about, Barbara had talked about health, okay? And what that details. We had decided that won't go into the chapter, that will go into one of the other chapters as part of it. The health thing that we looked at was a holistic-type thing. It goes pretty deep into your neighborhoods and how you become a safe town. And a lot of that may not be for us, so we're going to have a lot of discussion on that on and off as we look at that more and more, and we'll have better recommendations and patients for everybody who has that, so that's kicked off. We didn't go to the grand state, because our mailers are right here. No sense going there. Mailers are out, people know. Everybody's going to know, so... Let's see, so that's pretty much where we are on that. So the comments boards, we'll put out next week, six different locations. And as the questions will change weekly, we'll change them. And we have the drop boxes. Drop boxes are all made, they'll go into three locations, town hall, library, and pine cone. All right, so people can drop off their surveys if they choose to, they can go online, they can mail them back, so... So that pretty much takes care of that. I do, oh, I have one other thing here on that, master plan. I spoke to Ryan Gilpatrick, the principal at the Tuffin Borr Center School. And he was very interested in doing something here. He had to verify what he could do with the superintendent schools, all right? So it's come back, and the superintendent schools, they quit rolling in in the past two years. Ryan's not aware, was not aware. But any surveys that go into the Tuffin Borr Center School have to be approved by the parents of the kids. So that kind of really puts a ring on it. I think that if there's 25 kids in the class, five parents say no, 20 says yes, I'm not sure how you deal with it. So I'll have to ask Ryan a little bit. I told him I'd talk to you people tonight and see what the thoughts are there. It may be a little heavy lifting for them to deal with. So, you know, I'm going to kind of meet it up with him and come back and say, what do you think? You know, if five people say no, 20 say yes, how do you deal with it? Can you, do you have to take five people out of the class if the kids do it? I think it's going to be a difficult situation, so...
They can sign, they can sign, just take those five away. Do you know what I mean?
I don't know how they do it at the school. Things are changing pretty rapidly in the schools, I think. And he was quite surprised by it, so... This is something we're doing to follow them, okay? Which is not a problem for us to do that, so...
So whatever he was told, it didn't say that it has to be a unanimous decision by the parents?
No, it doesn't, but...
It has to be in front of them.
No, we haven't talked about that. So we haven't even gotten into that. I said, let me take it back to the board, and I'll come back here on that. I made some comments in my email to him about, you know, how do you deal with that? Is it fair to 20 kids, not to have five? So he's going to have to answer those questions, and see if he wants to take that on. So they do a lot of activities for the town right now. They have them for the past year because of COVID. But I'm seeing they tour third grades, tour town hall. Every so often, once a year, do you see them? Okay. They're getting involved with conservation. They do several other things for the town. They've been at the library, doing things. I think they've been at the fire station. And he says he does this on a yearly basis, so it was news to me, so... So I'll have another conversation with him this week and just ask him how we explain it. Is it comfortable or uncomfortable? Is it an issue? And we'll see where it goes, all right? And any questions? The last thing I have, which is something different. New guy, short-term rentals. Going back and forth adjusting a little bit on short-term rentals. I got together with Leanne while scheduling Justin in. I'm logging him June 3rd or July 8th, and I'm waiting to get him to respond back. And what he wants to do is, let's see. What he would like to do, I'll just read it as he goes. Perhaps a good way to go would be to put together a package of local zoning ordinance provisions, which will give the planning board an opportunity to see how other communities are handling this matter. As you know, discussions regarding zoning ordinance amendments usually take place in January before the March town meetings, so we have some time. Perhaps we could shoot to check in during June and July meetings before the planning board. So I'm logging him two days right now, and see where it goes with that. So he'll come on the data, what everybody else is doing, fire questions out, understand. What I told him, it had to meet our codes that we put together. He understood that, and wanted to make sure there was no liability to the town in respect of what we do. So he understood that. So those are things he'll discuss at the same time. So we'll just wait to hear from him now and get him in here and go to it. That sound good? And that's all I got? Alright.
I, I have two things if we can.
Sure.
So, the July meeting, July 1st is a Thursday. That would be our first meeting, which is right on the weekend, the heels of 4th of July weekend. Wondering if you wanted to cancel that and reschedule for the following week, for the 8th, so that we can hopefully get Justin in here. Because the 15th will be, if we have applications, will be our application. So, I'm trying to get him in on a work session week rather than a... So, that's why we gave him the two dates. But I wanted you to think about the 4th of July because I know that Matt's gonna be straight out on the 1st and...
And I won't be here on the 1st.
Yeah, and it is the holiday weekend, so people might not be here, so. Do you guys have an issue with just changing it to the 8th?
No. Works for me.
No.
Okay. And then the second thing is, I just wanted to inform the board. There was a lot merger that was approved last, I believe it was September. The board approved the Mary C. Williams revocable trust lot merger, merged three lots into one. And about a month ago, she's contacted, I think Cathy Pounder, to talk about that she made a mistake. Stating she made a mistake and only wanted to merge two of the lots, not the third. And could we, you know? So, I did seek counsel opinion, so I had it on record, I have it on record. And I found, I, I went to the office tonight before the meeting and this was there. And apparently, she's redone, I told Cathy that I needed to get counsel opinion. And I haven't gotten back to Cathy yet. And I will do that first thing tomorrow, but Rod has an abatement recommendation. And she has now, um, she has now, uh, wants a corrected merger. Like, basically for you to reverse it and merge, it wasn't three lots into two, it was, she merged, yeah, she merged the three lots, but it was only supposed to be two lots. So, the bottom line is, per the RSA, when, when the planning board merges the lots, and I did record it, so it's already been recorded. Unfortunately, she has to go through the subdivision process now to get to separate. And that's law. So, the planning board, whether they would like, sympathize, can't do it. And I just wanted you to be aware in case some stuff came trickling down either from the assessor or the board of selectmen or something, you know? You'd be aware of it if it came up to the board of selectmen. So, unfortunately, she's not going to be able. And I'm gonna have to speak with Rod and just let him know that this is not acceptable. And it stands, the merger standard is, until she subdivides the property again and merges the correct lots.
And if the lot, if the lot she merged doesn't meet the standards?
Correct, correct. Yeah. But the assessor and, you know, everybody thought that maybe because it wasn't changed through the assessing, that we could do a corrected notice of decision, but I doubled.
It's already been recorded, right?
Yeah.
So, that's what counts.
Yeah, so I, like I said, I checked with Justin just to make sure. And we should hang our hat on that. And he actually wasn't 100% sure, so he talked to the others in his firm. And they were all unanimous that a subdivision now has to occur in order to separate. So, just wanted to give you a heads up in case somebody heard something or you were fully aware of what's going on behind the scenes.
Remind me where this, where the lots are?
Mary Lake Drive.
Mary Lake Drive, cut one. Under eyes, squash your teeth. Anybody else got anything?
The May 20th meeting, will I be able to, if I'm not here, I may be away. And I have to be available for the Verizon.
If you call in with a phone.
I can listen.
You can listen, but you can't participate.
Okay.
You can't speak, but you'll be able to hear it.
Okay.
So, and that being said, I would not, if you're gonna call in rather than the computer, then, and you're not able to participate?
I would rather participate if I can.
Yeah, no, no, what I'm saying is, I might have to double check with Justin how that's gonna be handled because if she can't, if she's on the phone and can't participate, then technically, you don't, I, I don't think you have to have like a roll call vote and stuff because she, but she would have to be marked as absent. You know, I can write that she's participating remotely through the phone, but there's no way to, you know what I'm saying? Like you can call in, but I just want to make that clear. Because if she was on the computer and she could actually speak, then you're gonna have to do roll call votes and do the preamble. But if she's calling in and she can't speak to anything that's being said because the ability is not there, then technically.
It is a fiasco every time, like, attempted.
Right, but what I'm saying, regardless if it's a phone call.
If it's a phone call, I'm just like anybody else, just listening.
Yeah, she can listen, but she can't speak. But technically on paper, I'm gonna say that you're, you've called in, but that you're technically absent and not. That way, you don't have to do the preamble and you don't have to do the roll call.
Okay, I mean, I may, I may not be here, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, just in case.
Just be here, though.
I'll try.
So, yeah.
Okay.
There's a comments board up there. Oh, yeah.
Oh, nice.
So, this could change every week, somebody makes a comments down here. These will be taken off and labeled, like this says Q2 here, that'll be labeled Q2, Q2. Those will be filed and sent to MRI. And they'll put new clean sheets up with a new question, which will be the Q3 question, six questions, six weeks. And that's Barbara's. You go online and do the survey.
I'm gonna, I'll press, as soon as I can.
We're early on the question of the week, and we don't, evidently need to work for another week, but I wanted to put it on to make sure it worked okay. So, we're just, we gotta go along with the normal.
You got this?
We were in the post office today.
Yep. And that's online. That looks nice online, but that page, that page is really nice, nicely powerful with cards and, and did a good job with that, Leanne, thanks.
You're welcome.
Alright, motion to adjourn?
So, move. Does anyone have a question?
Sure.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't quite understand, if she's not here, can she still participate by phone in the meeting and, and vote on the rest of you?
Not, not by phone.
Okay. Now, I want to back up a second, we're gonna go to the budget committee. Because we have several people at the budget committee, and they were voting and they were doing a roll call, bill was here. And so, you got rules for one, but you don't, not rules for the other, I'm just kind of curious to try to understand what's going on.
It depends on if you advertise it and do it as a remote access meeting.
Well, all meetings are advertised as being.
But I advertise, I don't know what the other boards do, but I advertise this board that if you call in, you can't, you can only listen.
Okay, so.
I don't know what the other boards.
Well, here we go, I'm here for most of all the other boards, so that's why I'm asking the question. You do, you know, one set of rules here, and you're doing something different here, so. It was just posing the question, that's all I'll do. I just wanted to try to understand.
Well, and was the board, was the budget committee members on the computer or on the phone? Because there's a difference.
They called in on the phone and then they did a roll call vote. And I'm talking about Gary, okay, Gary was, he was missing during the budget committee system. So, I'm just trying to find out what the rules say.
Well, I think it really does depend on the board because other cities and towns do it that way, but I don't.
But it's illegal, you know, that's what I'm asking.
It's legal as long as it's advertised that way and you read the preamble saying, you know, that due to COVID-19, we found the need to do this and that and blah blah.
Okay.
There's a whole set of regulations you're supposed to go down if you do it.
I mean.
As I, as I remember, for, for phone-only remote meeting, it is, you have an even higher level of identification. In other words, if, if people can watch what's going on and participate remotely, you still have to do the roll call votes. But as I recall, the law requires if you're doing a phone-in and, and one of the members is, is actually participating on the phone, then every person that, that makes a remark or a comment in the conversation has to identify themselves in every proceeding, so that everybody that knows who's talking, because you can't, you can't watch it.
And that was done, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's legal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second? Second? All those in favor?